Please take your seats. The movie will begin in a moment. Mr. Todd, here I think Rolando, you're taking over.
Following the agenda.
Folks, good afternoon. For those of you that may not know personally, I'm Rolando Aydem, I'm with the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've had the pleasure of being there 17-plus years in various capacities currently as the Executive Vice President and the Chief Marketing Officer. We've got a lot of other team members in the room, I won't go through the introductions just yet, but before we get started, I wanted to, in fact, I think we have some accompanying slides, is there a, oh, here's a quick, and the good news is that there's not too many slides because this is really hopefully a dialogue. We're on what we call our listening tour, and we're on a listening tour because we're in the process of developing and updating our five-year strategic plan for not just the convention and visitors bureau, but for the hospitality industry for all of Greater Miami and the beaches, and I stress that, all of Greater Miami and the beaches. That is our charge. Today, we happen to be here at the epicenter of our tourism industry on South Beach at the Miami Beach Convention Center. Yesterday, we were up north at the COVID Center at FIU, and we had a good group there. Last week, or about a week and a half ago, we were at the Little Haiti Cultural Center. Tomorrow, we'll be downtown at the Arts Center, and then on December 6th, we'll be down in South Dade. And the purpose is because we want to listen and hear from as many stakeholders, whether they're in the industry or not. I think we all play a part in the success of this industry. It is the number one industry in Greater Miami, tourism is everybody's business, as I'm sure you've seen from buttons. So let me kind of take you a little bit quickly through the process where we're at today, and also some just general housekeeping. So as I said, we're in this process of developing this roadmap, this blueprint, for our hospitality industry. In order to help us do that, we've gone through a fairly extensive RFP process to identify a partner, a consultant, to assist us in all the research processes, the fact-finding, the best-practice analysis, and also the stakeholder interviews, of which we've had many, many so far. To get that, we had a committee, and I think some of the folks in this room actually served on that committee to identify the partner. We ended up going with Ernst &amp; Young, which as you know is a global company, and they have a significant Miami base of operations headed up by Mark Lunt, and you'll hear from Mark and his colleagues in a moment. They are also in partnership with MMGY Global, and Steve Cohen is here from MMGY Global. It's a leading global marketing firm that specializes in the travel space, and they'll speak a little bit more in a moment in terms of what their specialties are. As I said earlier, you're going to see a lot of mics in the room, and I think some of our team members may walk around with mics. I know it's a fairly small environment, but we are recording this meeting, so speaking to the mics will help us tremendously, so we encourage that as much as possible. I think my colleague, Bill Anderson, who will walk in, and even myself, because you're not going to hear too much more from me. I'll be working the room, we want to hear from you, and you'll hear a lot from our consultant partners, but you will also hear briefly from our president and CEO, Bill Toward, to say a few words, and I'll, if you'd like to.
Thank you for being here. I think we've got, you know, we've got a room full of VIPs. We have Greater Miami Beaches Hotel Association, the interim chair, we've got the VCA, the Miami Beach Chamber, the Servicide officials are here, and everybody's a VIP. And I'm not going to say very much, I think we have the visitor profile, we have the visitor profile.
Yeah, I've got some slides.
Well, no, the document, I think many of you, you know about the destination, you've been around for a while, and we have our senior team here. We want to, we want to hear, I want to go down and join you and jump in and out of the discussion, and we want to hear from you. We want to hear from you, what should we be doing, what should the destination be doing? It's not only about the bureau, but it's about infrastructure, or service, or any transportation. Really, the sky is the limit in terms of it'll be led by our able consultants, but we're glad you're here, and we want to hear from you. Now, if you're shy, nobody here is shy, there is a great website, destinationmiami.org. So we'd love to hear from you there, or take that website and send it to your employees, because we really want to see them. We're going to read each and every one of those, so with that, I'm going to sit down and get quiet, because we've got some great consultants and a great process. We felt very good about the two previous sections, so I looked around this room, and I see a lot of energy and a lot of ideas. So with that said, who's that, Mark?
Well, before Mark.
Rolando's back.
I'm back, but not too long. Speaking of the process, to give you a general sense of timing, we started this several months ago, I mentioned the RFP process. We're doing a series of town hall meetings, stakeholder interviews, our goal is to have a draft of this document sometime in January. We will reconvene with a committee that's helped us form this process, I'm sure there will be updates and tweaks, but it also is a plan that will be interfacing with the One Community, One Goal community-wide strategic planning process that some of you may be familiar with. That process is being led by the Beacon Council, which is the economic development organization for Miami County, so there's an interfacing of those plans to make sure that there's some synergies. To set up our partners, I did want to remind ourselves in terms of some of the trends, and I promise there won't be a lot of slides, and I'll go through these rather quickly, but I think it's important to look back at the past five years rather quickly, and these are full-year numbers. We do a lot of research at the bureau, Bill Anderson, our research director, he will be joining us momentarily. But I just wanted to point out, this is what our visitors have been telling us over the years. Now, this is from 2007, the contrast with 2011. Some of these attributes that are most liked features have remained fairly constant. Of course, our amazing weather, our beaches, which is epitomized by the Miami Beach experience. South Beach and Ocean Drive has risen dramatically as a most-liked feature. Attractions has practically tripled, and attractions is a fairly broad category, and the bureau has someone dedicated working on our attraction partnerships, and that's Sandy, that's in the room as well. Nightlife was exciting then, and continues to be exciting now in terms of a liked feature. Our international ambiance, and by the way, this is the domestic customer, and you'll see that internationally, you'll see some stark contrasts between those two sides of the coin. Restaurants have practically doubled in terms of the most-liked feature, and I think that's driven by a lot of great programs. The South Beach Wine and Food Festival, our Miami Spice program, a lot of the amazing things that a lot of you do at your hotels and other properties. And cultural activities, I think, is one that I really wanted to showcase. It's really, really grown dramatically over the last five years in terms of a liked feature by our domestic visitors, from 0.3% to over 14%. And if you toggle over to the international side, I'm not going to take you through all these, only to highlight some of the ones that have risen dramatically. Look at restaurants, from 18% to 37%. Look at cultural activities, from 1% to 30.5%. And yes, believe it or not, yeah, I know we get a lot of criticism, you know, friendly people, and it's something that has seen a dramatic increase, especially on the international side, because they can understand us better, right? But we have been hearing about friendliness and customer service a lot, and it is something that we perceive being a critical part of the strategic planning process, and I'm certain it will come up in today's discussions as well. In terms of where they're coming from, just two quick slides on the domestic side, and this is only serving as a backdrop for today's discussion. New York continues to be our number-one domestic GMA, it has in fact grown significantly since 2007, and as you'll see, there's pretty consistent growth down the board. Los Angeles, it's seen the highest percentage growth, even though it's still a fairly small number in comparison to New York. I think a lot of that is driven by the film and production industry that we know is so critically important to Miami Beach and to the boutique hotel community in particular. So those are some key trends on the feeder markets. And then on the international side, of course, Brazil, we hear a lot about that, it's grown by practically 50% since 2007. Canada, it continues to be a very strong market, but look at, you know, Brazil's not alone, Argentina, Colombia, Venezuela, these are amazing growths. Germany has been rather tempered, and England, if you look at the five years, has dropped 8.1%, but the last year, we actually saw positive growth. So again, this is five years, but in 2011, the UK, notwithstanding all their challenges, was up by 2.2%. So all our markets, both international and domestic, saw positive growth in 2011, but I did want to share with you the five-year trending pattern. France is up, Costa Rica, these are our top 10 markets. So I think that's all we're going to say in terms of, in terms of stats, because this is not a statistical update, it was to give you some context for the conversation, because we will now turn it over to our partners up here from Ernst &amp; Young and MMGY, and they will, I think, update on some more global trends, and then really focus on some key topics, very broad topics for discussion. What you'll see on the slide is simply a point of reference, we can go in whatever direction, there is a time limitation, but you'll see some general framing of what we're hoping to accomplish today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our friends and partners, Mark and Steve from Ernst &amp; Young and MMGY.
Thanks, Rolando. We've got a clicker.
You have a mic?
Oh, all right, yeah, we have a mic. We'll just share. Well, thanks for coming, I'll just kind of briefly let you know who we are and kind of how we framed out our tasks for the GNCCB. Ernst &amp; Young is a large accounting firm, so you might wonder what Beam Counter is doing here in a tourism strategy, but our client base is largely made up of investors and hospitality companies and lenders that focus on the space, and because of that, we have a large consulting division to help them think through matters of due diligence strategy, things that are outside of the accounting realm. And I lead that practice out of the Miami office here. So I've been in the market for 20 years, living in Miami, so I feel like a local. I came from New England after an eight-foot snowstorm, buried my car, and never wanted to go back, and focused all my time on tourism strategy. So whether it was Ian Schreger coming in, buying the delano, what to do with that asset, or helping them, you know, on the Lowe's RFP process, I've always been connected to the community, thinking through matters of diligence and strategy. And for that reason, you know, we've been put on to help look at some of the things that are going to drive the next five years. And I'll let you quickly introduce the MGY.
Thank you, Steve Cohen, work for MMGY Global, based in Orlando. Bill's trying to get me an open office in Miami, I'm a South Floridian, I'm very happy to be back here. We are the world's largest travel marketing organization focused on all elements of hospitality, primarily destination marketing organizations. We do everything from agency of record to branding, strategic planning, research, and what have you. We're pleased to be partnered with Ernst &amp; Young on this project, on helping them conduct the interviewing and the research around what the consumers think, what the stakeholders think about the process that we're going through. So several of you in the room were probably interviewed by someone on our team in terms of your thoughts of what we're doing. We specialize in that data collection, data analysis, and working with Ernst &amp; Young to develop insights that will allow us to develop that five-year strategic plan. So it's a good partnership for us, they do what they do very well, and I think we do what we do very well.
We understand the data and the Excel spreadsheets, and they know how to sell it. So in terms of what we've been doing in key activities, really two main points here, but our job is to analyze the trends, what's been happening not only here in Miami, but in other key destinations, really around the world. What are the best practices that destinations are doing to really move the needle in terms of length of stay, in terms of visitor spend, in terms of improving the visitor experience? So there's a number of ways we're approaching that question, and really, we view it as a three-legged stool. And, you know, the first leg is really these sort of town halls, understanding what the folks that are in the community think about what we can do better as a destination, what are your friends and family saying, we really have very four straightforward questions that we'll share with you. We'll have 15 minutes each to go through and hear your perspectives. The second is more quantitative research that we're doing from people who have visited Miami, tour and travel planners, as well as international destinations, and what they think of Miami. So what does the community think we need to do better, what do past visitors think we need to do better? And then the third leg of this stool is analytics around, what are the critical success factors that drive a destination? There might be safety and security, there might be the level of quality and depth of attractions, it might be infrastructure. So you've selected a series of critical success factors, and then we'll rank Miami against other types of factors that drive those success factors relative to other destinations, and again, try to find the opportunity to get what can we do better, are there best practices, or there are lessons learned that might help to shape the strategy over the next five years? So, these are your trends, these are your global trends.
Thank you. I'm a researcher by trade, so I can't get in front of an audience without at least sharing some of the data that we've collected. So we conduct a study called Portrait of American Travelers, we've done it every year for the last 23 years, where we asked about 2,500 people questions about their travel intentions, past travel habits, barriers to visiting particular destinations, what have you. So I'm going to share a couple of the things that we've learned in the past study. First is the increase of people interested in visiting Greater Miami and the beaches, up two percentage points since 2010. Next, interestingly, we asked some questions that are tangential to travel around economy. So we still think there's a considerable amount of consumer anxiety, you see the quote there, although the recession is over, or we put in parentheses, although I'm told the recession is over, I don't still feel, I don't feel or act like it is. We still see that 6 in 10 people believe that to be true, which, given the sample size, it's a significant move from 2011, so we're moving in the right direction, but it's still 6 in 10 who are saying they don't, they don't believe it's over yet. Next, interestingly, and speaking to Bill's comment on Miami as a luxury destination, people are willing to pay. If you give them a quality product, they're willing to pay for it. So we see that at five percentage points in the last year, from 69 to 74. And finally, looking at data just from this year, we collected this in August, 19% say they're going to take more leisure trips next year versus 13% who say they're going to take less, the remainder say they're going to take the same amount. So moving forward, in the drive.
Well, yeah, I'll just frame it out, we'll just trade back and forth, but really, this is really for us to hear your thoughts. So we've got a few discussion topics we want to hear your input on, and we'll just jump right into it. How do we increase the awareness of the unique experiences that Greater Miami and the beaches has to offer? So that's a broad question, but any thoughts on how to increase awareness? You can just raise your hand, we've got a mic in the front, and just I can bring around a microphone to share your feedback.
Yes. I mentioned I'm a researcher by trade, I've moderated hundreds of focus groups. For those of you who have ever watched a focus group from behind the window, this is when moderator puts a topic of conversation out on the table, and all the eaters is crickets. This is what you all do, so think about the question at hand, and remember what we're tasked with doing. So our challenge is to get you to help us determine what should we recommend we do to increase the awareness of the experience. Yes?
The national ad campaign that the CBD has done would.
If you could just identify your name and affiliation, that would help.
Peggy Benoit Dreams, South Beach Hotel. I think that the national ad campaign that the CBD has done so uniquely in Miami, and those are very clever ways that they've highlighted uniqueness of the destination on a national level. And so I think a campaign like that is always very effective.
Well. I've done cruise local and property, but I guess I'm actually going to ask a question. You know, a lot of times you hear people say that only 10% of the population has cruised in the United States, and so there's 90% out there that are, you know, exposed to be able to become cruisers in the future. My question would be, in order to be able to direct this question, how to increase, what percentage of, let's say, domestic and then maybe international, do we know have experienced the Miami experience, and how many haven't? And how can we reach those individuals? So in other words, is the opportunity 50%, is it 20%, you know, is the 37% more repeat? In other words, to direct this question of how we increase awareness, what is the exposure that we have out there, and who should we be directing it to?
Well, I'll start to answer that question, then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The 37% is among everyone who has traveled. So in the study that I talked about, it's people who earn over $75,000 a year and who have stayed in a paid accommodation at least 75 miles away from home for one night in the past year. Now, keeping that in mind, that's 50% of the population. That immediately eliminates the other 50% who are not considered to be travelers. So of that 50%, 37% are saying that they've interested in visiting Miami or the beaches. It doesn't take into consideration whether they're in here or not. To answer your question, and not to get all statistic-y on you, but it depends on who do you define as the audience? Is there a particular income category, is it people who travel, how frequently do they travel? And so I would kind of turn this over to Bill, say, do you have any information on that, on measuring the available audience for people to visit Miami who haven't?
And actually, let me, let me jump in as well, and then I'll defer to Bill, because one of the things, you know, we've been enjoying record tourism for several years. I mean, we truly are blessed, and frankly, a lot of this, you know, a lot of the credit goes to a lot of the folks in the room. One of our things that we've been looking at closely is not just the record number of visitors. We obviously want the right yield, we want the right type of customers that can frankly afford all of the rates that you're charging, and that's great. It generates a lot of taxes, keeps a lot of folks employed, a lot of infrastructure being built in this community. And the other thing is, we like to, you know, we get about 13.5 million visitors, record numbers, and that's great, but the let the stay is actually not growing commensurate to the number. So I know what we're looking at internally, and this is where we want some input, is how can we get folks to not only come here in record numbers, but stay longer? And part of that strategy is to make sure that they know more and more all the amazing facets of what this community is evolving into as a world-class destination. Even within Miami Beach, even within South Beach, there are new experiences that people can share. Yes, weather and beaches is at the top of that list, but, you know, I'll have that guest staying at, you know, the hotel here on South Beach, but we want them to explore more and more parts of the Greater Miami experience, and they can stay that extra night, or even that half-day. It starts making a huge difference. So, you know, we get 13.5 million, the overall number, you know, the opportunity, there's 100-plus million folks that are inbound tourists from overseas. There's a new organization that you may have heard a little bit about called Brand USA, that is going to be spending upwards of $200 million marketing international inbound tourism, so you have that happening at the national level for the first time ever. On top of that, visit Florida, which is the state's CVB, for lack of a better term, their budget practically doubled recently, and the majority of those dollars are going to be to lure incremental international tourists. So all these things are aligning, and half of our business is international, Brand USA visits Florida, what the bureau is doing, and what collectively we're all doing, the opportunity is amazing, and, you know, we're really at the cusp of, as good as things are, how much better they can be if we align our forces and our efforts. So it's not a very specific answer, it's a very broad question, I don't know, Bill, you want to add to that?
I always bring, read this document. Four out of five of our visitors have been here before, so they're repeat visitors, which is always good. A lot easier to get them back than to get the new ones. One of the things we've done, and Rolando mentioned the new offices, we haven't penetrated China or India, so we have boots on the ground there, basically in zero. We do have a college campus there, FIU, and we're working on air service. I mean, 97% of our visitors come by air, so our highway is that airport. So we fish, as Bob Dickens would say, not fish where the fish are biting, he says, fish where there are fish. So, you know, we've got our important markets in Brazil, you know, we've been in Brazil longer than any US destination, 22 years. We've opened two more offices, but we're looking at the emerging markets. Within five years, China will be the number-one inbound and outbound for the world.
How about for Miami?
Huh?
What about for Miami?
Well, that's why we're there, Doug.
And what's the potential?
Potential's enormous, it's enormous, but everybody, we've got to get air service. There's no, they can't get here now, so we're working.
Is it the chicken or the egg? Is it the air service that creates demand, or the demand that creates air service?
No, they want to come, they love to cruise, where the cruise capital love to work. They love to golf and shop, a lot of the same things, but it's, they've got to get here first.
But what are our airline partners saying, what is their proposal?
I'm glad you asked that, I want to talk about, we're looking at air service from, to Asia, from Japan, but your bureau has been more active with route development than we've ever been in the long time I've been here, thanks to Gisela Marti.
Sorry. Hi, everyone, Gisela Marti. In terms of air service from Asia, that's actually a very high, high priority for our air development team at the airport, as well as for us. Just to put a little bit more in terms of numbers and context, there's about 60,000 people now originating travel in Asia and making their way to Miami. Currently, they're getting here via different cities and carriers. So there are airlines that are looking at that route, but it's a very expensive route for an airline to start. You need two planes, because in essence, it's a 16-hour journey. So they are looking at it, but again, it's a very, very expensive proposition, but the airport has laid out incredible incentives along with us, so we feel confident that it's going to happen probably in the next two or three years. But it's important to bridge the communities.
And they have new planes that are in development.
The Dreamline.
Yeah, the 77, which is the equipment that can do those long and thin routes, so.
We actually, we actually experienced already our first Chinese group this year, so that was through the.
Who are you with now?
Vienna, no, it's for Vienna's particular resort, so I just wanted to add to that, that we actually experienced already our first Chinese group.
How did they find you?
For a travel agent in New York.
Okay. Also, we were just, your bureau was in the China International Travel Market, CITM, just last week?
Last week.
Just last week, in Shanghai, was it? We're at that show every, every year, we're one of the few, but growing number of US cities, so we're working, we're working as hard as we can to get the air service. We have a college, FIU has a campus outside of Beijing, they're extending that campus, so the brand awareness is some through that college, the only US campus in China, so it's, and as well as in India. The likelihood of getting travelers from India, there are 300 million middle-class Indians ready to travel. So we're working for those shows, we're looking for air service from India as well. As well as, you know, we've just opened an office in Moscow, you know, we've got Moscow connection again. So we're doing those emerging markets while we fish in Brazil, and Argentina, and Colombia. Colombia jumped over. Colombia jumped over Germany two years ago. So, it's, but, you know, if you want us to do more in China than this is, or India, we're here to listen, but you've asked us what we're doing. So, if we need to do more, then we can change. Does that help you, Doug?
Well, it does. I mean, I think it clears, I guess the question is, how can we increase the awareness? Now, we kinda know what you're pointing at. You know, we gotta think, okay, when, if international, which has been the majority of the conversation over the past 10 minutes, you know, I was, quite candidly, I was at TTG in Italy, in Rimini, a little while ago. And, you know, I think it's all great that we're part of, you know, Visit USA and everything that they're doing. I don't know how much of the doubling or the tripling of the budgets will reach us and what we can do. And, you know, I know it's for the greater good, but, you know, when you think about Miami as a destination, you look at some of the things that you guys did with the pop-up experiences that you did in South Baltimore, New York City, you know, can we do more things that bring Miami forward and these type of things instead of being in a small 10-by-10 booth with all these other destinations in the United States and a pavilion where, to be quite candid, compared to other pavilions internationally, it was very underwhelming. You know, the way the pavilion looked compared to other countries, Brazil and other ones. So, you know, let's really sizzle up what we have to offer internationally and not just put ourselves, you know, okay, we're part of Visit USA, we need to be beyond that because we are beyond that.
I'd like to add, something, sorry. Hi, everyone. My name is Ruben Campbell. I'm the founder of Music for Your Heart Foundation. It's a nonprofit providing instruments and music irrigation to kids. And I feel very much identified with the question, sorry. Because you're talking about raising awareness about unique experience. Well, first, I'd like to throw an idea first. How well we are defining that unique experience? Second, it's a unique experience according to who? Because everybody that comes to Miami has different needs and we need to listen and understand those needs to give them that unique experience. One of my suggestions, now that we live in an online world and it's a visual world, I'd like to see some videos that could go viral worldwide and especially asking those visitors to be part of that video, not just inviting to come and spend two or three days and go back home, but actually build that unique experience. They are the ones that will be our ambassadors abroad. So, I would say that using the online technologies, social networks, video content, and a strategy to go viral has a huge impact nowadays. And it's exactly what I'm doing with my foundation to create that unique experience. I'm asking individuals to hand out directly those instruments to the kids. They've never meant, but I made them part of that experience. And I left a mark in both lives, the kids and the adults. And that will grow around them. And that's what's building that awareness. So...
I'd like to add to what you're saying.
Sure.
This is Tanya Maroni from the Palm Hotel and Spa and Circle 89 Hotels. I want to follow on to what you were saying because in my travels presenting the hotel and then also presenting Miami as a destination, I always find that people are very, very interested and very surprised to see that when I say Miami has actually grown up. Miami is not what Miami used to be. It's not only a city of magic and it's not only about partying and it's not only about, you know, all of these crazy things that we've been known for, but actually Miami is much, much more than that. And what you were saying about creating, raising the awareness of that unique experience, we need to debauch define what is that unique experience now versus what that unique experience used to be. And I think there is a lot to, you know, to promote about Miami, be it Wingwood, be it, I don't know, the fantastic gastronomy and culinary areas and things that we're doing. There's so much more. There's, I think there's a place to fill the brand Miami with more genuine experiences. It's more about touching people and about, you know, it's about the Art Deco and it's about the Everglades, you know? And it's not only about taking a boat ride in the Everglades, but it's about taking a kayak ride and, you know, encountering a crocodile right there and doing more eco-trips and making more eco-friendly. I could go on forever, but anyway. Thank you.
I'd just like to add a very simple example. Miami has become the top destination for electronic music. We have a festival in March, Ultra Music Festival, that this year, 2013, they're taking over six days instead of three and reaching 320,000 people coming from all over the world just to listen to electronic music. Luckily, last year, they started an experience which is called the Echo Village with 10 little booths. And here I am with my foundation, Music for Your Heart, defending, well, not the opposite because electronic music is still in the family of music and there's room for every style in music. But with a booth, talking straight to those people that originally made their plans to come to Miami to have that unique experience through DJs and electronic music. And we all think that it's all related to young population that is just thinking about music and having fun and all what that implies. But I had a very, very nice surprise to see a young population surprised about what we are doing. And actually, those kids now are working with me to get even greater inside Ultra. And I think we need to go beyond that and sell a little bit more than what is sold so far as a city of just sun, beach, and fun and party.
Mark? A lot of these ideas are good ideas, both in terms of, God speaking. Jeff Langman, actually, I'm the chairperson of the Miami Beach Visitor Convention Authority and I also manage the Betsy Hotel. One of the challenges that I think we're kinda circling around is that Miami Beach actually has changed, has grown up. It is different. But I don't think that message is out there. We're toying with it in terms of a newly culturally advanced community. We're toying with it in terms of, actually even to the things that you were saying as far as our philanthropic, our heart, you know, and what a kind, gentle place it is, our leadership in our educational field. Every time I turn around, it's somebody else, it even happened to me today at this meeting, you know, somebody else doing something in the terms of educating our kids and, you know, getting our youth smarter. And Ultra is up to six days and Winter Music Conference is now up to nine days. I mean, there's, it's just gigantic what's happening. But what's not happening is that there's not a lot of cohesiveness in this city. And what I mean by that is, as diverse as we are, there's still a lot of bad attitude. There's, it's a difficult, it's between the poor transportation and the traffic and the attitude that you might get because of a language barrier. And you go to many countries and the language barrier is a humorous thing that bonds people together, you know, joking over, you know, how we are trying to understand each other. And here, we have this kind of an attitude about it, you know, whether it's, you know, the Spanish to English, Creole, whatever. And what we're not doing well in this whole process, when visitors come and experience what we are, their vision of what we are, and leave, what we're not, the message we're not giving them is that we, you're really very welcome that you're here. You know, if you land at MIA and maneuver it, and God, I love the new MIA compared to the old MIA, but we've still got a ways to go. And then you get into a cab and then you drive through the traffic. If you're going to Brickell, God help you if it's the wrong time of day or South Miami. Even the beach, I mean, we have people, I was at a meeting this morning, it took them an hour and a half to get from Coral Gables to the beach. We do construction during our Basel. I mean, I could go on and on with all the things that we do wrong, but it's simple ways of saying to everybody, we get it, this is a mess and, but we're happy you're here. You know, kind of almost a Disney approach to the welcoming. Because we don't welcome people, we welcome people in my hotel. And by the time we do that, just saying hello is such an unbelievable thing that people are blown away. You know, by the time they've maneuvered getting into this city, it's so painful. I don't know why we can't get this transportation thing together. There's, you know, the more that Miami develops, the more there's a need for Miami and the beach to somehow have some connectivity. And those two bridges are just not the answer. They're good for what they are, but we've grown up and we have people that would spend more time, like what Rolando was saying, if they could easily maneuver the whole city. And yet, whether it's the politics or it's the expense or whatever it is, but we are not, we're not welcoming people the way that we should be as a primarily, in my opinion, tourist destination.
Good afternoon. I'm Julio Stifel. I'm currently with the Perry South Beach Hotel, Forward Gas and Board, Forward Maroni, et cetera, et cetera. But I've lived in this community for 40 years and I worked tourism for about 30. Going back to the question, which is how can we increase their awareness? And this goes to our partners in the county and the state, which have the funds. But filming, filming is an awareness tool. And Miami is historically connected to television and filming. Next door, back in the 50s or 60s, Jackie Gleason did filming and put Miami on the map. Then came Miami Vikes. Miami Vikes did the same thing. So, we need to increase the funding of filming in this community and that make it more welcoming. And if it goes to the state, so be it, or the county, but the funding needs to happen. And there is funding. We just spent 500 or 600 million dollars in bed tax money to finance the ballpark. And part of that money can be used to fund the promotion of this community. Also, creating awareness, we have partners, big corporate partners in this city. We don't have many, but we have some people like Accardi and Burger King, for example. They could become more active in the promotion of the destination. Being, helping with the creation and building of the stands in the convention and trade shows that Doug was referring to, they could be principal advocates of helping us to put those things together. But definitely, bed tax perhaps needs to be reevaluated and used in other forms that is not only building ballparks for millionaires and millionaire players. So, that could be used for that.
Thank you.
I'd like to add.
Okay.
Peggy Benoit Dream, South Beach. I'd like to add about the convention center because that is really the economic driver of tourism in this community and also in the region. And so, whatever we can do as an industry, and I know the CDB is working very hard, as is the Hotel Association, Miami Beach Chamber, and ONNOM, BCA, we need to improve the center so we can attract more groups into this market. And that's going to be the secret of our success. Or if it doesn't happen, it could be, I don't wanna be dramatic, but it could be the death of this industry, this market.
Well, when that happens, Doug, we'll move on to the next one. So, you've given us some good insights in terms of the experience, the unique experience. Now, we wanna find out what's missing. So, as people look at their vacation planning and they consider Miami and they choose not to come here, what causes them to choose other destinations? What are we missing here in Miami that they look for in other places? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Duncan Tavoris. I'm with the Towne Surfside. And hopefully, you'll be hearing more about us as our tourism product grows. But I actually just got back from Boston. I was there for Thanksgiving and I used to live there. And I was one of those city people that, you know, didn't have time for anybody on the street. And from the arrival to departure, I was impressed. I was impressed by everyone I encountered, everything I saw. And it started with the airport. In the airport, as you're walking towards your taxi, there was an intercom system that had a message from the mayor of Boston welcoming you to the city. And then one from the governor, also welcoming you to the state. And I thought, wow, this is, you know, awesome. I've never heard anything like that before. And it was in the passageways where it's very quiet, so, you know, I really listened to it and they were talking about all the attributes of the city, all the attributes of the state. We got to the shuttle bus to go to the train, the T. And there was a car rental truck that stopped and said, oh, you know, I saw your bus way back when you hopped in and I'll take you to the T. I mean, where does that happen? You know, I didn't even know where I was. I used to live in this city. Everywhere in the city, they had kiosks. And I know it's a little easier because it's one destination and we all do these similar things on a piecemeal basis, but maybe it's time to look on the broader spectrum. There were kiosks everywhere with maps and directions and signage for, you know, indicators for stores and restaurants, which really, you know, I knew the city like the back of my hand, but I didn't know the new restaurants. So, it was a great asset knowing that in a couple of blocks, there would be somewhere where I can access information, feel comfortable about accessing that information without being intimidated to asking someone or, you know, being told the wrong information maybe. But it had a cohesive look everywhere you went. Everyone was asking, you know, did you need any help when I stayed in a hotel? And again, I, you know, I knew the city, but the service aspect, and I don't know if they've done something differently, but there's been a shift, there's been a change there. And sometimes it's internal where you embrace it from top down. You know, you start at the top with the mayor and the governor and these things trickle down. But when I worked for Bermuda Tourism, we actively took it upon ourselves to educate the people on the island how important tourism was. And I know you do certain things and I'm wearing your button today, but we have an award system that people really got into after a couple of years, where you would nominate someone for a sunshine award for something they did to support tourism or to help someone. This was nominated by hotels and employees that did something outstanding, but also visitors were able to nominate a local who did something and they got to stay in a hotel. Because sometimes, you know, locals can't afford to stay at the Betsy or wherever, wouldn't it be a great experience? And by winning this award, they were able to stay at the Betsy and the visitor also got the chance to sort of come back to the destination. So, there are a myriad of things that you can do from infrastructure to, you know, education. It's just a matter of where do you wanna focus in your budget, obviously.
Well, that's great feedback. Mark went through some of the wheel of things that we're doing to try to collect all this information. One of the things that's on that list and what we're currently doing is talking to Convention and Visitors bureaus in other cities and asking them, what have you done lately that's worked for you? Not trying to take away, we're telling them we're not trying to take away their tourism PR, and what's worked. So, that would certainly be a success story that we try to collect and be part of this discovery process. And thanks for bringing it up.
My name is Jeff Donning with the Miami Design Preservation League. We really do have a tremendous resource in this community to answer this question. You know, in some of our neighborhoods on Miami Beach, these houses and buildings are now filling up with people who have been many, many places since last April or May. You know, we joke among ourselves that, you know, some of us, some of our groups are like the Strategic Air Command, one-third of the air at all times. So, you have a lot of people who do a lot of traveling and they experience a lot of different kinds of destinations. And they come home here to Miami Beach particularly, and to Brickell, and to Key Biscayne, and so forth. It's a tremendous resource and I don't really... It's a tremendous resource, and I don't really think you've ever tapped it.
I think we have, oh, I'm sorry, Ed Ponder, I'm the guest service at the Betsy. And I'm also the former past president of the Concealed Association. I think we have to also look at, and thank you very much for the analysis of what people are expecting or the trends from 2007 to 2011. What you notice there is the growth opportunities in 2007 was we capitalized on sort of areas, food, arts and culture. But one constant request for travelers is music. Miami always just, we fall short of their expectations for music. They come here expecting live music, Latin music, Bohemian music, Jamaican music. We're so close to Latin America and the Caribbean. They just rightfully expect we can find music, live music, whether it's free or paid, not show. I mean, I love Ultra and Women Music Conference, those are great assets. But I think now that we succeeded with, you know, with Food and Wine Festival and Miami Spice, we've succeeded with Art Basel and all the various arts festivals that brought our dining and artistic cultures up to speed. We really have to start focusing on music because that's a source of pride, national, international pride that people look for. It's one of those, you know, we won't ever lose our nightlife, you know, as part of our culture. Fully correct. That's one of those things we've always done. We've done well with nightlife. We'll always have that ocean. But we need to capitalize on the music. We've got Cubans here, Jamaicans, Bohemians here, that we don't have enough athletic experiences. We don't showcase it enough. We, everyone's sitting there wanting to talk about the road. For those who have not been, you know, everyone can't get in there. And it's not, you know, accessible for all places. And we also, accessibility, besides music, is getting around, wayfinding. So those are two things that really think we should work on. Wayfinding, make it easier for people to get from the city to the beach, from the beach to the city. Now, we're taxiing was not, we weren't grown up enough for we're taxiing years ago. Coming across the bay. We are now. That would connect the beach to the city a lot easier. You know, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, it was harder to get. But now you can connect. There's a lot more traffic, more windy traffic. People from Miami don't want to come over, not because of, the only reason is because of parking and traffic. So if we find a way to connect those two ends and also offer more live music, I think we can actually promote those opportunities, and people will be willing to experience it.
I'd like to add something, and I agree 100% with you, that we need more music. Actually, my mother lives in London. Her best friend was in Miami 50 years ago. And he used to tell me, wow, Miami had a great experience, that unique experience that we're talking about. Because Frank Sinatra was here, Dean Martin, all these great, great, great performers. Live music, big bands. And the problem we are facing nowadays is there are only a few venues that actually invest in live music. Like Van Dyke, they have 365 days a year, live music, first level. And many, many, many people, more than you think, don't even know it's happening. They walk on Lincoln Road, they pass by their cafe, and they never knew that there's a first floor with live music, with amazing bands performing every day, every single day of the year. But also venue owners, they don't want to invest a budget to get a live band if they can have a DJ for $100 or $150 that is going to cover the need for the online. So we need to be creative and think of an incentive or help somehow those venue owners to get maybe more funding so they can afford live bands at least one or two days a week, so they don't use just a DJ the whole week. And also, on the other side, on the customer's side, I've seen so many people that easily pay $20 just to get in a club with no drinks. And then when you ask them to pay, you know, $10 for a live music show, they look at you. They think it's, you know, live music, it's a given and has to be there, and they don't have to pay for that. So we need to also think of a program raising awareness and consciousness within all of us to, to help that to happen.
What else are we missing? We've got a long list of things that Boston's doing, and we're not doing. We've heard about music. And a big hand goes up in the air.
I mean, I've mentioned it before, but I can mention it again. I do think we can do a lot to become a lot greener and environmentally friendly. I think that is definitely something that would attract future customers, especially the type of customers we are trying to attract, which are affluent people who recycle back at home in Europe or wherever. If we can really say we're a green destination, oh my God, that's really going to elevate us. But, you know, many steps to be done, and many things to do to get there. But I think, I think we should start somewhere, right?
Hi, I'm Morello, City National Bank, the oldest bank on the beach. So I'm a lot of tourism, but we are partners with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And just something that you mentioned earlier, that people have short stays. I guess it kind of reminds me of Vegas, you know, it's four days when you're out. Who can just party for six or seven straight days? If that's what people see Miami Beach as, to come to the beach, they go to the beach four or five days, and they're kind of done. And I know you're holding these town hall meetings in other areas. I live on the beach, so that's why I came to this one. But I think what I read in the e-fliers, that, you know, you wanted to talk about how we can get people out to those other communities. And by doing that, they'll stay here longer because they want to go see, you know, Wynwood. They want to go spend time in the design district.
On Sunday, I went to Matheson Hammont Park. I've never heard of it, I've never been there, and I've lived on the beach for 10 years. And I read about it in a magazine on an airplane. So it was the coolest little park, and I had so much fun. I spent all day spending there. How do I buy the coolest restaurants off the beach? I watch Food Network, I watch Bravo, I watch shows like Anthony Bourdain or The Layover. And that's how I found out about the coolest little restaurants, places I would have never heard of. You know? I just find that amazing, that I don't even hear about these things in my own town, but I'm finding out about them on TV, which maybe is good because that means people all around the country are seeing those shows too. But I think that's a great way to get stuff out. I don't know how we get on those shows, or how that happens.
Well, one of the things that we heard yesterday was that a lot of the locals can be the mouthpiece for tourism, but they don't really know what's going on here. So your point is well made, that you went someplace, Iced Together is a little one, by the way. But if we don't know what exists in our community, and we're out there talking to people all the time, how can we share it with them? I do want to go back to what you said, that we're trying to get people to stay here and go there. That's not what this is all about. We want people to be everywhere. So whether they're staying here and going there, or staying there and coming here, it's a community-wide effort. But your point's well made. It's, you know, go back to the first question, how do we better communicate the unique experience? If you take the term "unique experience" out of that, how do we better communicate? Whether it's paid time on those types of shows or other marketing methods. So your point is very well made, thank you.
Sorry, I'm one of those places that are out there, Surfside.
No, you're still on the beach.
We're still on the beach. And really, what lacks here, and it brings me back to my Boston experience, sorry, but it's top of mind, is the ease of getting around, and it's a transportation issue. You know, I know we can't solve that as a CBB, but I'm wondering if there's advocacy or is someone in the organization constantly working with Miami Gate on transportation issues. The closest place in Surfside to buy a bus pass, and it's so easy to go up and down A1A by bus from us to South Beach, from us to Abentura Mall, is on 70, I think 72nd, 74th Street. Well, Surfside doesn't begin until 8:00, 7:00, and it goes to 96. So, you know, for me, it's an embarrassment when I'm trying to tell people that the only authorized deal for a bus pass is, you know, 10 blocks away or more, and you have to get on a bus to go and get it. So, you know, I know these are bigger issues than greater Miami CBB, but part of Bermuda Tourism is that we ended up having advocacy sections of our tourism component, our staff, that would be the liaison with one person in certain areas. And forgive me if this does go on, that is constantly trying to work behind the scenes to work on a one-on-one basis to make these things a little easier from a visitor perspective as opposed to what's easier for bureaucracy.
Thank you. Yeah, let's go on to the next one. This one's a little bit different. This is, to a certain extent, take off your hat as a provider of tourism hospitality. Put on your hat as a resident. You have people that come and visit, people that you encounter that you talk to. What do they say about visiting here? Both in your personal life, then put the hat back on as professional, the things that you hear from your guests. What do they talk about? What do they like? What do they not like? So we've asked what you think is missing, and what we could do better. What do the people that you encounter, how would they answer those same questions?
Okay. Most of my visitors, and I'm from the New York area, so that's where my visitors are coming from. They, most of my visitors are from the Northeast, which is my hometown. And they love the nature, the weather, and I live down by Massillon Avenue, so I live down there, and they love that part. But, you know, they want to experience Cuban food and grow. There are great areas that, you know, many people, you can't have dinner outside and walk around in the evening after September. And we do that all year round.
Where they live.
Where they live. So just being outside and enjoying the elements in the winter, that's, for many people, that's a great experience.
What else do you hear?
They need or they're looking for waterfront restaurants. Like, while there's ones with a landscape, but you can count them on one hand.
A lot of people that came to visit me come from Europe, especially in the wintertime. And obviously, they love the weather, and especially the water temperature. The ocean, it's amazing. And a few things they didn't like is whenever they wanted to get into a bus, there's a change. And they never understood why the bus driver can't give any change. So when they look for change, they have to get outside, and they miss the bus. And it's frustrating. So that is something that is quick, easy, easily changeable, and that could improve their experience. And also, they have a little bit of the feeling that in those commercial streets like Ocean Drive and Lincoln Road, sometimes they take advantage of them with the T. Which is sometimes included, sometimes not, sometimes they don't tell anything, and they end up paying twice. So they feel, well, they just stole my money, and it's also frustrating.
Great, thank you. Okay, a hand over here, a lonely hand.
Hi, I'm Kelly with Miami Food Tours. I'm from the Chicago Highlands area. And when my friends come to visit, well, of course, they love the food, all the Latin food that you don't get across the rest of America. Eat in a different country every night for every meal. So they love that. And the walkability of Miami Beach. When, of course, I'm working, I don't have always time to entertain them, but I live on the beach, and they can walk anywhere, anyplace they need. On a different note, not what my, well, by the end of my tour, I'm usually friends with the tour guests. And a lot of, some of the feedback I've had was that their experiences up until I came on my tour was along Ocean Drive, getting ripped off. I had one family that said, you were never going to come back to Miami. Experience after experience of, like what you were saying, over tipping, they didn't know it was included, the drinks, the price of the drinks weren't listed, and their bill was outrageous. And but it's the genuine experiences that at the end of the tour, when they were introduced to the great food for the right prices, that they said, oh, now we will come back, now that we've seen that. But those bad experiences can surely leave a bad taste in people's mouths. But once they do get to the genuine experiences.
Across the bay.
Across, well, there's genuine experiences here in Miami Beach as well, though. But, yeah, that's what, it's the weather, the food, and the culture that Michael, you know, we do.
Thank you.
No, I just had to end here. There's just a lot of sharks in Miami. And on both sides of the bay, I'm talking about the sharks that are on the land. And it's horrific in Miami Beach, but it's becoming worse in Miami. We have this culture of busting people for having your potted palm in the wrong place. But we don't identify restaurants on any level. They don't go in, and exactly what you're talking about. I mean, in Los Angeles, I was, you know, they switched from just ignoring all the restaurants to grading them A, B, C, a lot of cities do that. And it really indicates some kind of, again, it's as if we cared, you know, that you could walk in and be charged $25 for a drink, and then be charged, you know, a $10 tip on top of that, which happens, you know? And you go in for a couple of drinks and walk out with a $100 bill, and walk away saying, I'm never coming back to this town. I don't know why that is, especially to the foreign tourists, you know, who don't necessarily, you know, they think maybe they don't understand the rules. So I think that we could better police ourselves on levels that are realistic to, you know, what we're talking about here today, than the unrealistic, seemingly just keeping people busy, you know? Your trash can is full, literally, your trash can is full, I'm writing you a ticket. Your palm tree is in the wrong place, I'm writing you a ticket. We get that, I'm sure Peggy can vouch for that. All of the hotels here do. And now it's getting worse in Miami, now that Miami's kind of like waking up to the, you know, we want to look great too. So I think that's one of the comments that I see everywhere.
And going back to what you said in your comments, is you're correct, people don't mind spending, and it's Jeff's point. We have a lot, what my friends and my friends say, is we're grossly expensive. Now, and not that we're grossly expensive in the luxury market, we're just grossly expensive everywhere. So you've got little bars charging insane amount of money as the luxury bars. And that's the challenge, is that, you know, there is, you know, everyone has a sense of, we're Miami Beach, or we're Miami, we can charge where we want to charge now. There used to be a difference in a bar, in a beer price on Miami Beach, and a beer price in Miami. Now there's no difference. You can go to Westchester, well, not that far, but not Westchester, okay. No, not Westchester. But you can go to the Grove, and now we're now starting to expand these, you know, menus. You know, when the service is not the same, the price shouldn't be the same. When food quality isn't the same, the prices shouldn't be the same. And our business is looking for the affordable meals? There aren't many affordable meals and quality deals in Miami anymore. And that's also something that people lead with. And they share that negative experience because we're not giving them enough value. What we have to understand is, are we giving them value and enriching experiences? So that's what my friends are saying.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, go ahead. Just wanted to answer the question that's up there. My friends and family are always surprised at the vitality. Sort of, there's an energy here that people kind of grasp if they know Miami, but once you get here, it's very intriguing to them. You know, part of that is the fast pace. But then you have these pockets of tranquility. So there's a big yin yang that goes on in this area that is very appealing to people. If you can somehow capitalize on that and project that somehow through a campaign, I think that would be the best.
One of the issues also, people from the other side to come to the beach is not only that it gets congested, but they already have to think in their mind, okay, if I go to the beach, I'm spending $50 already, and I didn't have even the first drink. Because the valid parking, parking is very limited, and I have to add to that $20 to get and I have to add to that $20 to get into a club. So that's already $50 and I didn't have my first drink. So a lot of people from the other side, they'd rather stay in regal area, for example. But the parking situation is also an issue. I have a lot of people that they were having a great time by Terrace and Lincoln Road and they're stressed out. They, they're not enjoying because they only have a two-hour limit and, and they have to run and they don't have a change and they have to put back some money and they don't know how much to, to put because they don't know how much they're going to stay. And if they're, they're going to enjoy even more, they're going to go over and then they're going to get a, a fine and it's very stressful. Yeah, or get towed. Yeah. And, and actually, when you get towed, it, it's quite amazing also that you have to pay cash. I went with my mother the first, first time.
That's, that's pretty standard everywhere, though.
No, no, believe me. Yeah, well, I, I come, I come from, from Madrid, where I think we, we have some kind of nightlife over there, too. And when my mother came to visit me the first time, we went to have dinner and we finished at 1:30 and we got towed. And first, it's not easy to find your car. You don't know where it is. Once you get there, you have to pay cash, $250. And then what if you, you don't have that cash on you?
You don't get your car. They're very happy to keep it and charge you more every day. It's a challenge in all the cities that have that kind of parking challenge. It's, it's an unfortunate situation, but not unique to Miami. It's something that you'll find in most large cities. With that, let's go on to our last question, which is, "What can we do to make it better?" So we've heard a lot about, "Here's what people think." We've heard, "Here's what we're missing." We've heard, "There's people pointing at each other over here." You can, you can go back to the last one if you'd like. It's okay.
No, I don't want to speak about this one. I want to just speak in general. I'm Donna Zimo, Chamber of Commerce, Visit Miami Beach. I visit with people every day because I run a visitor center for the city, for Miami Beach Chamber of Commerce. And I get pros and cons about our city. Many people love Miami Beach. More love Miami Beach in Miami than they don't. But there are a few major problems that we have. And one of them, I must say, is valet in part, valet parking and street parking, which we all discussed today. But the majority of tourists, and I'm speaking tourists as my friends, family, as an experience, because I hear it every day. Parking, we have to improve our parking, the, the ability to park. Valet parking is overcharging. Drinks, restaurants are so expensive for the average traveler that we need more mom-and-pop places. These are things on the list that I hear every day. Our, as far as our customer service, we seem to have improved in that with, with, with what I hear from tours, that they enjoy Miami Beach. And my experience is parking, valet parking is a, is really a negative force for us and a positive force is our weather and also customer service and the Art Deco district that we have right here on the beach. There are other things. I'm sure I have a list of more things, but.
Feel free to reach out afterwards.
I will.
If you have anything else. So what else can we do to enhance the tourist experience that we're not already doing? This is your chance to shape the future. We're doing everything.
I think the transportation is a big thing. Maybe if you go on back to it and back to it, so it's a transportation. Even, you know, a couple of questions before about the, the cab experience here compared to New York City as an example. I mean, if we would have taken 10% of what we spent to build Martin Stadium, and I'm a big baseball fan, don't get me wrong, we could have bought brand-new cabs, beautiful cabs, air-conditioned, with TVs and everything and create the experience from a customer when they leave that now a much improved and beautiful airport, very modern airport, get in a cab and get to any of our hotels, restaurants and attractions. It's, I mean, I was speaking to one of Ernst &amp; Young's people when they came and interviewed us at Goldman. They had a horrifying experience riding from the airport here. I mean, they thought they were going to die. And I believe, and I've been in New York cabbies with drivers. They're not the best, too, but at least I would have died in a nice car, you know? It's just the transportation, whether it's cab, whether it's buses, metro rail, go on and on and on, I think would really solve a lot of ills of, of what we go through as an experience for our tourists here in this destination.
I just want to add to that. I'm actually, I go every day over time to take a cab because I hardly can talk to the driver without him being on the phone, not paying attention to the customer. And, you know, it's just every time like that, besides the condition of the car.
Many of the visitors that come here want to go down to places like Coral Castle, the Everglades, Monkey Jungle, the Zoo. And we don't have one form of transportation unless they have a car to get to those areas. That's the only way they can get there. Granted, I know we are Miami Beach and you could spend a week here on the beach and do a lot of things, a few days in Miami. But there are other destinations within Miami, Dade County, that people want to go to that they cannot get to. I get that every day at the visitor center. How do I get down to the Everglades National Park? So that's something that we should really look at trying to improve our transportation system or tour system down there, down to the south.
My last comment. Of course, we have to do our best to give them the best experience while they're here. But even before that happens, the first thing and last thing they are going to experience is the airport. And I had a lot of people that say, "I had a great time while I was in Miami, but I will never go back again because of the way they treat me at the airport." They had a horrible experience at the airport. And that, I think, could be improved.
What part of the airport experience did you?
Immigration.
Yes, immigration, the, the waiting, the being put on the secondary room for no reason and wait 14 hours, get interrogated every two hours by a different policeman with just a simple question and make you wait another two hours, being handcuffed and transported to another terminal. Forty hours later, since you started your trip.
We're in Palenque.
What's your customer base?
Businessman coming from London.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wonder what business.
Why not? Investment banking.
I mean, I'm, I'm going to back, back on Dallas. We all know that this is a drive market. Bill to Bill's point, you know, we depend on MIA and to a lesser degree, with the growing degree, for a lot of airport. Well, this is a drive market. So understand that our visitors get here and they sometimes get stuck in a small box, whether it be South Beach or a small box which would be downtown Miami because they can't, I mean, Key Biscayne is one of the true treasures we have. And although they don't want us all to go over there, it's, you know, it's still a place that people should visit. You know, it should visit, but there's no way to get there unless they drive. You know, God forbid, take the V bus or wherever bus goes over there. But, I mean, understand that working with the municipalities to actually have transportation, I, I mean, I credit the city of Miami for the new trolleys. That's helping their locals, the residents in the area. But that kind of system would do wonders for our visitors. Because, you know, the taxi cab experience, you know, the, the insurity of the cab experience, the Miami Beach electric shuttle was, was a convenient addition to South Beach. But that has kind of, kind of gone by the way Central Metro, Mrs. Metro Day took over. But having a convenient, simple, well-marketed system to get people to and from the different pockets of Miami will go a long way to, you know, to people, having international guests especially, feel a lot safer and comfortable with going to different segments of Miami by day or by night. That's, that's really a constant concern. Is it safe? How do I get there? Because they don't, they don't want to drive no more than we want to drive. And, and we know our way around. So I agree with you, Donna.
Yes.
My name is Desiree. I work for Commissioner Tobin's office on Miami Beach. Very proudly work for the city. And one thing that we're already working with, with the Bureau on is, and Max Klar, our Tourism Cultural Affairs Director and Assistant City Manager, is working on like three or five-day little itineraries. So when residents, the visitors come, they would have maybe a plan, maybe they have a family, and there are different points of reference that they can go visit. And I know we've been working on that and I think that's going to be something that's going to be really great that we can give visitors. Also, I love promoting small businesses, especially on Miami Beach. Like my friends from New York love to come to the Icebox. They have the best carrot cake. I think that Oprah says it's the best carrot cake in the country. And then also, there's a new bakery down on South Point Drive called Lea and Marie's. And their mission statement is to employ autistic adults, which is amazing. And plus their pastries are wonderful. So promoting a lot of the small businesses on Miami Beach that have the very particular cultural flavor of the city would be great. Like, we're also going to be having kayaks on Miami Beach, like free kayaks in the parks. South Point Park is amazing. So I, I think that if we can do a little bit of promotion of these very unique experiences to Miami Beach and then also my, my homes on Miami Beach, but in Miami as well would be good.
May I go back to topic number one? I think it was, how to increase awareness? I know we work a lot with Miami Airport and people flying with the Jet Set City and all of that. But I'd like to see us reach out to the rail and to, to the rail travel and to the auto traveler, you know, who are coming into our state. I mean, we don't really reach out to people that drive down here. They come into I-95, I-75, I-10. Thousands of people stop at the welcome centers up there. Visit Florida Welcome Centers, 5,000 per day on I-95. I think we need to reach out to the auto industry and also the rail, Amtrak. I mean, what are we doing to increase business with people traveling by the train down to Miami from all over the country? I mean, that's just a little, in, in addition to how to increase awareness.
Well, there's also opportunities for people who may fly into Florida, then into another Florida market, whether they fly to Tampa, they fly to Orlando, to attract them to Miami as well. I've heard Bill on a number of occasions say that 97% of visitors to Miami come by plane. That's probably because that's almost the only way to get here. Not many people are driving from the upper Midwest and driving here and spending two days in the car. To your point, perhaps there's an opportunity at those welcome centers. But I would also encourage you to think more around partnering with other Florida cities that have, people who could exchange tourists, whether it's Orlando, Tampa, what have you, where their gateway city is Orlando or Tampa. And you have the opportunity to get them to come down here and for them to go there.
So I have another idea. When a convention, I think, when we have a convention coming into town or we even have our Basel, to reach out to them ahead of time and let them know about some of the activities they could do or some of the restaurants they could visit or, so they felt welcomed even before, while they're registering or before they even get here. I thought maybe that would be a good idea.
I was wondering if it would be possible to see if we can attract some world-class event that doesn't happen between December and March. And, and I understand that, and I understand that it gets a little dicey because of hurricane season, June 1st to November 30th, technically. But, you know, you think about New Orleans and Jazz Festival, who's been, is one of the best festivals in all the United States, happens in April. We really don't have much that goes on in this city in April. And you think about music festivals, obviously, we have Ultra in March. But, you know, we're in Miami and we are so connected to the Caribbean and South America. Some type of Latin festival or some type of really big, and I'm not so sure that would be something that we can produce or someone that could do, but some, some world-class music festival, other than Ultra, that is live entertainment, that we can try to attract here maybe in the month of like April. Where, or September, I mean, trying to, you know, stay away from them. But, you know, it's, 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 I think it lacks just that. I mean, and we've made such great strides on the cultural side. I mean, great strides with, with the New World Symphony and the Adrian Arsh Center. We've got some world-class venues here. But besides what happens at those venues, if there's some way we can create some type of world-class event, April or September, summer would be great if it would be possible, would, would be fantastic. And I think the Bureau has done a great job in the summer months of creating things like Miami Spa Month, Spice. I know that this was our, I think, our first and second year with Live Music or the Music Month, November, second year. Maybe piggyback on that and, and trying to create some world-class events in and or outside of the, the usual suspects of December through March.
Thank you. And on that note, we can play, we want to come back and talk about the rest of this process. You know, we promised to get everyone out here by 6 o'clock and I think there's an event, there's an event that some of us will be attending across the ways with the Hotel Association. This is, well, number one, thank you and thanks to our partners here at the Miami Beach Commission Center. We work with them on a daily basis. Max Klar was here. He just bounced out. Desiree, thanks for coming, the Deputy Commissioner. These, as Bill mentioned earlier, this website, destinationmiami.org, we encourage you to go on there, perhaps provide additional feedback, some ideas that may come up after today's session. But we also encourage you to join us, perhaps, at other sessions. We'll be across the bay, as I mentioned earlier, at the Adrian Arsh Center. And then for those folks a little bit further down south, we'll be at the New South Dave Cultural Center, another cultural facility that has come online. So we, you know, we, we want to hear from you. And I think to the point that was made earlier, this is not only about what the Bureau can do and of course, we're part of the solution, but issues like transportation or signage are way funding. It's going to take a village. And I think you mentioned earlier, it's, it's almost an advocacy role. And it's not just local. This goes up to Tallahassee with FDOT and some of these issues. So these are things, I know Bill Todd, our President and CEO, spends a lot of time in the advocacy space, but it's, it's, it's never over. And especially on some of these issues that truly lie outside of our jurisdiction for the most part, but are critically important to our success. So thanks again. I'm, I'm going to turn it over to my boss to close it up and, and provide some additional feedback.
No, real quickly, we want to give a shout out to Carol Ann Taylor. Serves on our executive committee and is the recently elected Chair of the Black Hospitality Initiative of Greater Miami. And I think you have some, some outlets at the airport. You do business, what are your shouts at the airport?
Miami to go. Miami gifts to go.
Shameless plug, I'm sorry.
And we don't have that to them.
Carol Ann kind of chaired our, our heritage tourism. I want to expound on what Rolando said because our, a good friend here from Boston. You need to, we'll pay for you to have dinner tonight at the Intercontinental Hotel for the Second Annual Greater Miami Beach's Hotel Association Hospitality Leadership Awards to honor some of our, our great on the management side. So if you want to be our guest tonight to honor some great achievers, right, Peggy?
That's right.
It's at the Intercontinental Hotel. So, and you also had the NKEY Awards for, how, how many years has that been?
Twenty-three.
Yeah, along, the largest, the largest event in the United States of America honoring the hospitality industry, the workers, the workers. So we'll get you up to speed. Welcome, welcome. We know Roger Carlton, your, your City Manager, very close to him. So with that, destinationmiami.org. We'll see you at the Intercon, we'll see you at South Dave, we'll see you downtown. Anybody want, come downtown tomorrow. Edith's going to be there. Thank you, Edith. So with that, huh? We're paying you to be there. So with that, back, back, you guys, I wanted to close out. That's it? Let's go drink.